All right, when are we open the meeting? At six o'clock? Mr. Rendell? Why don't you come on down? So I've read through the property assessor's recommendation and the notes. I'm assuming the other select work members have as well.
From her last meeting, that's her third meeting?
Yes, from her last meeting, yeah.
Okay, yes, yes.
Yeah, it was the stuff from Mandy that they looked at in the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Yeah.
There was no actual request on there for an amount of money. I spoke with Mr. Rendell last week. And so the amount of their, uh, the request for the payment is forty thousand dollars.
Going back to 2011, if I remember. And then it said somewhere in here.
It may be in her notes or something.
Their base, yeah. Going back to 2006, actually, looks like. Mr. Rendell, we had a brief conversation when you were here before. I'm having a difficult time wrapping my head around this. You're familiar with the abatement process. You filed for your home twice, right?
I filed, yeah, you, I built your house, so.
The part that's puzzling me is you've gotten your taxes, you've looked at it, I'm sure, right?
The tax, yeah, we discussed that last time.
Yeah. I guess I'm just not understanding how it could go this long without, without your looking at it or questioning.
I looked at it every year. I just assumed, I think, a while, a long time ago. Totally, I don't remember that far. I'm guessing that I looked at it and went, well, taxes went up. And I paid them, and then every year after that, it was pretty consistent with that one year, you know? The only time it dropped was a few years ago. It dropped down under two thousand, just under. Prior to that, there were over two thousand a year.
Right. Well, we, the town went to revaluations in 2011, 2016, 2021. They were sent letters with each revow and didn't take any action any of those times, right?
But none of those were, they were consistent with the 2006 or '07?
I guess, why don't we see what you guys, uh, with this? Beth, I'll start with you, and then you look at as much material as I have.
I know, I, I don't, um, since this is the first time that we've come up with a situation like this, I don't know what to say, except that, again, it seems that it is, it is no small amount of money, so it's not easy to say a mistake was made, but it seems like there were many opportunities to realize that a mistake was made. And I think I'm curious how the person who was looking to buy the land noticed so easily that something was amiss.
What's her name, uh, Mandy?
Yeah.
She went to see him, and he, she, she told him that. I went to see her probably a year earlier to get that information, and she didn't give that to me.
To find out the same information, or?
I wanted to know what the, what the value of my property was.
Okay.
And she came up with, her telling me that about a year prior to the kid finding out, she said that she hadn't done large pieces of land in a while, and that the number she's gonna give me hasn't been done in a while, so it's probably like thirty percent more than that now. The value of the property. And then he went to check on it. He checks everything too.
But did he check with her, or where did he?
He went to check with her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then at that, so, and that was?
That's why she told him that there was a, a building lot on that property. And I don't, I don't, I didn't know that, I never knew there was a building lot, and I don't think there is. And I have all my bills, none of them say, usually when you get your bill, it says, this is your backland, this is what you're gonna pay for current use. And if there's a building lot on it, it usually says building lot is worth this much. This is what you're being assessed for the building lot. I have nothing like that. I have just backland, this is how much it is.
Yeah. Not being an assessor and not as familiar with it as Mandy is, all I can say is that when, when she found it and made the correction, I don't know what to do about the, the, the back times, because all, all I can speak of is from my own experience, when I thought I was paying too much, regardless if it was always the same, I checked. And when I could make a change, I did, and lowered my bill, but it was on me to do it. So I, I don't know what to say other than that. You know, I probably saved myself that much over time too, it wasn't a mistake. But I, I checked my tax bill, I knew what was going on, and I, I changed it. So I, I don't know what, I don't know if that helps or hinders the conversation, but, I feel part of the, the burden of having checked those tax bills was on you, even if a mistake was made. And then I'm gonna have to think about the rest of it for a little bit. So I'm gonna pass this over to Calvin, while, while I continue to ponder, but, but I, it's, it's not helpful for me to say I don't know how to handle it, except I'm kind of with Scott in that I find if a lot of money was paid and you didn't like the tax bill, even if it seemed the same, with the amount of the revows that came up, and the amount of times that you've been in to question other things, that that could have been questioned.
I only questioned one thing one time.
Okay.
And it was probably just prior to this going up, the price that, that.
Is the lot deemed unbuildable? Is it a building lot?
Don't even know whether the building lot is on its own.
It's a nine acre parcel, correct?
A nine and a half acre thing, yeah.
Right, and that was subdivided off the big piece initially?
It was never subdivided off.
It was a staple lot?
It wasn't there when I bought it. When I bought it, it was just one big piece. I subdivided two lots on the road. I never subdivided, I didn't even know about that lot, if there is one. I don't think there ever was. It may have been like maybe in the eighteen hundreds, and it dissolved like years ago. Oh, but yes.
I'm just confused as to how a nine and a half acre lot is established.
I didn't do it, you guys did that. Then once I put it on there, all of a sudden, and it wasn't told to me that it was a nine and a half acre.
Well, now that part of the conversation.
So you were under the assumption you had one parcel of land, but you were paying taxes on it?
No, I'm paying, they sent me a bill just for a hundred and forty-one acres of backland. It never said so much for backland, and that, you know, would have been like a hundred and thirty acres of backland, and a nine and a half acre building lot, never said that.
But isn't the issue that it was deemed unbuildable, and then the mistake when it got revowed was, it was called buildable? So there always was a second lot that they were looking at, correct?
No. There was never one. When I did this, I have, I had a really good survey, so. The guy who did my surveys, top notch.
Oh, then I'm, then I'm missing something in all the correspondence, I think.
You too, I thought this was.
He never came up with that either, that there's a building lot there.
I was just under the impression this was a separate lot, it was a known separate lot, and it was deemed unbuildable, which is what drove the surprise of the tax bill being so high.
No.
That's the angle I'm coming from, and I just.
That's what I thought too, that's what, that's what we're confused.
But it was, the technology was never there.
Okay, I'm just gonna try to pull a map up and see what it is.
So just a quick question, you said you'd only filed one abatement?
I filed one abatement, that was for my house. Anyway, I, I did a comparison with other houses in the area.
Okay.
I was being.
So according to those records, you filed in 2006. Does that sound right?
Could you say that again, I'm hard-reading?
Yeah, 2006.
Yeah, it was 2006 when I filed the abatement.
But you also filed again in 2009.
In nine, I don't think I filed an abatement in six, I think it might have been nine.
Okay, this says both.
2006 and 2009.
I don't know about that, not sure. I believe I only filed for one abatement, and that was for a house, my new house.
Okay, so this is why I'm confused, because the information we have says the parcel was created by subdivision in 1999.
Yes.
So, okay, so there, so something was, the, the parcel in question was subdivided in 1999 by you?
Yes.
Okay.
It was divided into two house lots and backland.
So it's the hundred and forty-one acre lot that was at that time deemed unbuildable?
Yes.
The backland?
Yeah, the town deemed it unbuildable, I had to put a road in it.
Because there wasn't enough frontage. Okay. Sorry if I'm, I'm reading through this again, but it, it was unclear to me that. So there are two parcels, your house parcel and then the hundred and forty-one acre backland.
Yeah, two house parcels. I did two building lots.
Okay.
And you sold one or you kept it?
I don't hear ya.
You sold it or you kept it?
I sold it or I kept it?
Yeah, you said you did two building lots, I just pulled up the map which issues.
Yeah, I built a house on one.
And your house.
I built the house on one, I kept the other one, but I built the other one like several years later, and I sold the house for a lot.
Okay.
So the only parcel that we're discussing that has the mistake that was deemed unbuildable, and then, you know, got on the record as buildable, is the hundred and forty-one acre backland?
All right.
Okay.
I, I believe so.
Okay. And I think we're all on the same page.
Okay. My built house is on the other two lots.
Okay, okay.
Nice one, Stowe.
All right, so in 2006, when everything, when we had a town revow, the backland was listed then as buildable, not unbuildable. And that's when they.
I don't have anything written on that, nothing. Nobody told me it was buildable. If it's buildable, I'll take that, guys.
Well, um.
I'll give a lot more than forty thousand for it.
So all this information that I'm reading from came from our records, so it's in our records, so there's records of it, and as far as I know, Mandy, when things are revowed, sends out information to this effect, correct?
Yeah.
So you should have it. One would, one would assume.
If you send me something, it's gotta be, I would, I would, if they sent me something and said, hey, you didn't know, but there's a lot back, a building lot back there, so you're being charged more. Then I'd say, yeah, okay, that's not written anyplace for me.
Well, yeah, I guess my question would be, what was the difference in the tax between 1999, when it was called a hundred and forty-one acres of unbuildable backlot? And 2006, when suddenly it was assessed as buildable at one twenty-three? What were you paying?
I don't, I couldn't tell you exactly, I didn't look at that, but I think it was like five or six hundred bucks.
So your tax bill jumped from five to six hundred bucks up to a hundred and twenty-three, and, and that didn't make you ask a question about why?
I just assumed it was taxes went up.
From five, from five hundred to one twenty-three is a, is a, is a pretty substantial jump.
I guess, oh, I can't remember that file, I thought.
Okay, okay, well, I just wanna make sure I understand, because that makes, that makes a difference too. So I think if we could get, is there a way that we can easily find what the, um, what the, what it was billed at, and what the amount was, what the, what the jump was, actually from 1999 to 2006?
Or what about the current use application for the lot? Was there a reason nine acres were left out of current use? I don't know.
That's what I mean, I never saw it, that, I never get anything for that.
Well, I mean.
Every year, every year when I get my bill, it should say you're being assessed for nine and a half acre building lot, and a hundred and thirty acres of current use. I never get a bill that, I get a hundred and forty-one acres current use.
How about the tax collecting software, if you want me to look at it?
Yeah, I would just be curious to see what the current use application was, and if it doesn't jive with the total amount of acreage of that nine point.
I don't think this is really, I, I don't really know what an abatement.
But this isn't about the nine acres, really, it's about the hundred and forty-one back acres.
Right, but if we're saying he's getting taxed on nine acres that aren't, that are buildable?
No, not the nine acres, a hundred and forty-one acres. That's what we're talking about, not the nine acres. It was the hundred and forty-one that was deemed unbuildable.
Correct.
And then in
When I'm being assessed for.
About a hundred and forty-three.
Yeah, but it says one forty-three point two acres unbuildable lot with nine point two not in current use, so I'm trying to figure out how is nine point two not in the current use application?
Oh.
Was it kept out for a reason? Because nine point two not in current use would reflect about two thousand dollars, because I have a lot similar size in the same situation.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So I'm just trying to figure out why it wasn't either enrolled in current use, or if it just wasn't included in the application, it was just an oversight. You know, we didn't tally up the numbers to equal one forty-three, when it went through, it went through as one thirty-three.
You guys know as much as me, I just heard about it, a little while ago.
And, and yet, all of this would have been noticed when the, that's what the assessor does, correct? But when the revow and the letters go out, I mean, you, you've gotten, you've gotten all the other revow information, enough that in, um, 2006 and 2009, you came in to ask questions, so you got whatever statements you got then.
2009 had nothing to do with the revow at all.
No, it's just, it's just that you got the mail, you got the information.
Yeah, I guess so.
So if other information came out, it just seems like you should have gotten that too. I, I just wanna make sure that you're getting your mail.
Yes, I get my mail.
Okay, good.
I do.
That's a good thing.
I don't always read it, but.
Yeah, oh, well, now that's another thing.
The bank actually pays the bill now, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, but I'm having a hard time saying you don't remember, you don't read your mail, you didn't really pay attention. Those aren't really good excuses.
Oh, I know. I just found out about most of this stuff, I'm paying attention now.
Right, but you went from being able to pay attention in 2006 and 2009 for abatements.
That was, I didn't do anything in 2000, I don't believe so, I don't know why that's there. I don't remember that at all. The 2009 was for my house, because I was being charged more than everybody else. I was being charged ten thousand dollars for a fireplace that I didn't have. That was a big one.
Right, but, but you were examining your tax bills with a level of detail that showed that, right?
Yes, I was right in the middle of building it and stuff too.
Right.
It was a different project than land.
Well, I, I think I'd like to see the notices that Mandy sent out. If, if everything went out and was noticed properly, and you get your mail, and you, you read your mail, I don't know what to say. It makes it difficult for me to, to say, it, it makes it difficult for me to, to think that this is a, um, an, an a matter that we want to handle by saying, by just paying. I guess, I'm not expressing myself well here. It's, it, it makes it difficult for me to not say that you've got responsibility here. Yes, a mistake.
How much does my responsibility worth?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, worth forty thousand dollars to me. And in reality, that forty thousand, I could have invested it. I've been paying the town every month, I mean, every year, for the taxes. I missed a couple of times back years ago, I was like a week late or something like that.
Yeah.
And they charged me twelve percent on what I'm late. If I did that now, you guys, I lost twelve percent on forty thousand for all this time, plus the investments I could have made.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear you when you say that. I, I, again, for me, it's difficult that if the bill for that went from a couple hundred bucks to almost a hundred and twenty-three thousand, that's when you ask a question, whether you think the taxes have gone up a little bit or not. So I think, I, I, I feel part of the responsibility is for you, and I'm not sure that's forty thousand dollars worth.
Where you getting a couple hundred bucks to a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Because when I asked you what the, 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 um, the taxes were you were paying on the lot in 1999, when it was deemed unbuildable, you said a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, that was at first, I think by 2006, it had gone up. But what is the hundred and twenty-three thousand that then, and he's gotta break down with taxes?
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotta go all the way down. Oh, jeez. I didn't scroll down far enough. Oh, I have a lot more reading to do then.
What do you think? Do you want to table this for till our next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to see the, the current use application, see if the numbers don't jive, and if it, if it truly was a clerical error, I think I'd be more have to try to work at something, but to echo that, I mean, there is a, there is inherent responsibility when it comes to assessing the bills and taxes. Twenty years is a long time, it's a lot of money, but, you know, if I don't pay my bills or I'm neglect on them, because I didn't pay attention, I have to take responsibility. I just, I wanna see the current use application, see where the, if there was something lost in translation, or not recorded properly, or, you know, stuff does happen, you know, I'm not, I'm not giving benefit of the doubt to one or the other, but I'd like to see it all before, you know, we take a step in that direction, I think. I think that'd be the responsible thing to do.
Agreed.
And this can also just, because I didn't, I obviously didn't scroll down far enough to see this very last page with all the handwritten, uh, numbers that were paid in taxes. This doesn't say at the top what this is being paid on unless it's described in here, what these numbers refer to. This is all.
I think that's the hundred and forty acres, I believe, that was my conclusion, I'm sorry. I'm assuming that's right, your handwriting?
Yeah.
Okay, this is all on the hundred and forty acres starting in 2007?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And, um, I would like to see if it's, I mean, you don't have to copy them for me, but I can go and ask me, because I'd like to see what her communications were. So I could read them and just see.
I have, uh, if you guys want the copies of the notices that were sent out?
Yeah.
And copies of the current use application.
Yeah. I think that would make things more clear.
All right, we need to look at more stuff.
I don't think you guys looked at anything this past two weeks.
Well, we, we did.
You did?
Yeah. But as I said, I'm finding it difficult that you weren't paying attention, you didn't read, you didn't notice.
Yeah. I've got all the stuff that came, if, I might have even read, I'm pretty sure I read the, when the taxes go up, but that had nothing to do with what's going on, you know?
I think it does.
It didn't say anything, say.
I think it has everything to do with what's going on.
Yeah, it didn't say anything about you're paying taxes for a building lot on that land. You know, it's just that I'm paying, I'm paying for back, for, what do you call it? Oh, yeah.
Backland.
Yeah, backland.
Yeah, and, and most of the tax bills come through with, the way they're listed on our cards are, if it's, if there's a building on it, it's listed separately, and then the land is listed separately.
That's right.
And that's how it's, that's how it's listed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't get that. I got just backland, no mention of a piece of land on it.
Okay.
A lot on it.
All right, we'll take a look, all right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good, thanks, guys.
We'll look some more, thank you.
So I'll be back, you gotta let me know.
Um, yeah, do you wanna spend one now, or?
I'll talk with, um, Mandy on Wednesday, we'll try and get all the stuff, and then we'll look at our agenda for the nineteenth.
Okay.
And then I'll give you a call and let you know when to come in. Okay. All right? Good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rendell.
Thank you, yeah. Good luck.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Where do we wanna go from here?
I think we, let's see. Well, Alice is here to talk about the letter from the school, well, from the school board, well, it's not from the school board.
I was gonna say, it's not from the.
Right, right, it was, it was a notice about a, uh, uh, house bill
Yes.
Uh, to the finance committee?
The Senate Finance Committee, yes.
Uh, the Senate Finance Committee.
Um, I actually have a copy if you guys would like to have it.
Yes, thank you.
So.
It was sent down the email, and unfortunately, you guys didn't get the email when it was sent down. And so I put it on the agenda and didn't realize you guys hadn't got it, so.
Gotcha.
We had a problem, I can go.
It's, it's not from me, um, I am just gonna start by saying that my views and opinions are my own, they are not reflexive of the Shaker Regional School Board. Um, I don't speak for the Shaker Regional School Board here tonight.
Understood.
So, um, just wanted to bring this to your attention, because it is, um, a, a bill, or, well, not a bill, it's a letter that's going to the Senate Finance Committee. The Senate Finance Committee meets for the New Hampshire state budget, uh, every other year, and, um, these letters have been going, not gaining too much traction, but, uh, starting in May 2021, there was about eighty signatures on the first one of local officials and school board members urging the state to, uh, properly fund education in the state of New Hampshire. So that first letter went out, there was about eighty signatures on it, in May 2023, there was another one with about a hundred and fifty signatures. This current letter, um, is approaching four hundred and fifty signatures, uh, currently. So, um, again, my own beliefs are that, you know, the current economic realities that we're facing, um, with the less than meaningful increases to the state education aid year after year
Gotcha.
places an enormous strain on the taxpayers. So, uh, time is kinda short, because the Senate Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow for the budget meeting.
Wow.
Um, so I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration and reading that letter, and, and consideration in signing it.
Yeah, the, um, it's, the deadline is tonight.
Yes.
So we can sign electronically, we can also sign individually, as well as the board, I believe.
Okay.
Um, and I can see that both you and Randy have signed for Canterbury so far.
Yes, Randy signed back in February when she was a member of the board.
Okay, good. Do, um, oh, if I counted down, see how many, a hundred and fifty signatures, but how many towns? Do you know?
I do not know that number off the top of my head, but I think, again, this was at about five fifteen, I got a email back from Michael, because I did ask how many there were, I think she said there was four hundred and thirty-two at about five fifteen this evening, so.
Well, it's nice though, because a lot of them, when you scroll down, are not just individual signatures, they're boards and committees that have signed.
So that's what they're asking.
So it represents more than just.
They're, they're asking for local officials to, to look at this and, you know, voice their opinions.
Yes.
So that's, that's all I had, I don't know how many questions I'm gonna be able to answer, because again, I did not write this, this is not coming from the Shaker Regional School Board, this is just, um, you know, for your consideration.
Oh, there we go. Hundred and no, two years ago, it was a hundred and fifty-two, representing seventy cities and towns. I forgot a map. Well, I don't know what the board would do, but I would sign it personally if, um.
Although, I don't need an answer.
Yes. Oh, all right, fine, good. But if we, if we do it as a board, we need to do it tonight, which means we'll have, should probably do it while we're meeting.
Agreed. Calvin, I know you've looked at this letter, I suspect.
No, I think, I think it would be, I would encourage, I think signing it would be, you know, putting out the right case, especially for the town, and, you know, showing that we do care about our taxes, we care about education, you know, it would be a big impact, I think, locally, if this did actually go through the budget, and something came out of it, you know?
Make a motion?
Make a motion to sign. Make a motion to sign the letter to, from Michaela to the Senate Finance Committee.
Yes.
There you go.
Anybody want to make a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Click this link to sign electronically. Oh wait, I can do it right from here. Hold on, you can. Click this link.
And you can either sign for the entire board from that link, or you can sign it individually.
Just add your name. Not the reading code, okay, Canterbury's Farmers. Hold on, it's telling me I'm signing as the Canterbury Farmers Market, that doesn't help. Somebody else may have to sign, because I can either sign as myself, or the Canterbury Newsletter, or the Canterbury's Farmers Market.
I can assign as administrative assistant?
Yes, please. Well, the Canterbury's Farmers Market is very proeducation, so.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for bringing it.
Appreciate you drawing that to our attention, Alice.
Are you gonna go see Andrew Valinsky at the, uh?
I read the book. Um, I don't know if I can, I don't know how, how early Cross schedule is.
Okay.
Okay. Andrew will have to wait, yes.
New business?
Thank you, Cal, for signing it.
Yep.
Sir, are you here about a purchase of property?
I am.
Come on in.
I use chat GPT to answer that. You can enable chat GPT on your iPhone.
Great.
You can, are you, I found that.
I'm sorry, Cal.
Just a second, sure.
So I can finish.
Finish.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
As you were. For now, all right.
You can stay there, you don't have to go back and go forward.
Always good to have a map.
Oh, do we have those too? Or you just had it?
It's just, just one, just one in the file.
Yeah, actually, I'll pass that one down. Is that very clearly says where it is?
Not if you don't know. What this road is.
Canterbury Shore Drive?
Okay.
And you show it.
Oh, I see, I see, there's the thing, there's the dot. There's the, much more better. Thank you, I thought this was. Okay.
I see. Good, Cal.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so you're Mr. Smith.
I am.
Very good. And what I am looking at, and I'll read it aloud. I, Canopy Smith of Twenty-four Robin Shore Drive, Canterbury, New Hampshire, would like to put a four thousand dollar bid, on sixty-five Canterbury Shore Drive Lot Seventy-One. I have attached a purchase and sales agreement on sixty-one Canterbury Shore Drive Lot Seventy-Two, and would like to combine the two lots into one. I'm very pleased at the time, would like only to sell to a butters, and we're making, and we're just one larger lot, so we aren't overbuilding on small lots or overdeveloping in already overdeveloped area.
I found out a couple of years ago, that that's what you guys did, and I,
Yeah.
Lord, feeling happy that that's what you do, because we are, we are developed in that, area. I grew up in the area and.
Did you? Yeah.
I grew up on our pool boy.
Okay.
And I moved away, and as I got to an adult, I was offered a house, and now.
Okay.
But it, it's just the difference in the amount of houses there. It created, you know, and then when I heard all that, and then I'm, the property came up, and I'm like, I'm taking maybe a retirement home, and for myself, over there, where I'm living now. Way bigger than I need to be.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can't move for a couple of years anyways, because I told my ninety-six-year-old neighbor I won't move until she passes, because I'm her life supporter.
Yeah.
So I just love the neighborhood, I love the people in the neighborhood, the association's been great, Jonas was a amazing president, and, that's even not being a president. But, um, yeah, I just like it, make one large lot, and make a nice little house, yeah, for myself. I had no intention of buying another property until I saw allowing to sale, and then to put all this together, and it's like, well, I wanna do it.
So you're just buying this, um, the lot number seventy-two now, and you wanna buy this at the same time?
At the same time, that way I could combine them, and I, I wanna have the whole survey done until they want to up again, we can be elected for that.
Any input?
So what typically happens is, in this case, um, the town, um, has been for many years trying to sell just to a butters. And then combine lots, have the, have the sale go through with the restriction that the lots are either combined, or that there's no residential building on the second lot, on the, the previous townhome lot.
Yeah.
So what would happen is, we would wait until your purchase of the lot goes through.
Right.
And then we would do a sale of the townhome lot to you separately, and then you could combine them after that.
Correct. Now, that's what I, I didn't expect, to be honest, to have this brought up tonight.
Yeah, I, we, we would have to, we would wait until the, um, deed is recorded. When you buy that, 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 uh, number, um, seventy-one, or seven, uh, I'm sorry, seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Yeah.
Once that deed is recorded, is your name.
Yeah.
Then the town would, uh, if the select would agree, they would, they would, uh, we would do the paperwork for, uh, Lot Seventy-One.
Correct. But I totally expected that, I just wanted this brought up. I'm gonna, I'm over to push this within the next week, this, uh, I'm putting to sales. And that way there, everybody knows what's going on, and hopefully I can do it all at once, and then.
Yeah.
And that's all made very clear when the second lot is sold, that the restrictions that are on there are assumed.
Correct, the paperwork that, that, uh, Mr. Smith would receive from the town, will show in the deed, that the, or, the recording would show that that is, uh, has to be combined with, or on the deed, um, with Lot Seventy-Two.
Any further discussion?
Not from, not, not, no, thank you.
I'll make a motion, then that we accept Mr. Smith's bid of four thousand dollars for Lot Seventy-One, sixty-five Canterbury Shore Drive, contingent upon the sale of Seventy-Two, if I remember.
Seventy-Two, yeah.
And the deed restrictions that we discussed.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
All right?
Uh, but I, I call you when I.
So let us know, uh, when you go through with the purchase.
Yeah.
Our assessor will go to Meramec, kind of register deeds. They'll make sure it's, uh, recorded, and then we'll do the paperwork here with you, we'll set up, we'll do the, uh, sale paperwork with you, and record it in deed, and we.
Time, time limit.
Oh, yeah, what have we been putting, that, thank you, Cal, ninety days?
Yes, I think it was ninety days, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, ninety days for the sale, the first sale to go through, okay.
Correct, right, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, like, hopefully within the next two weeks.
Thank you for reminding us. Before you leave, actually, so I'll need a second and a motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
And all those in favor, aye?
All right.
Okay, now you can go. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
You too.
All right, so that was, after the line.
And you can go back up through this thing if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, why not, we've signed some stuff. Get through that. All right, first is a, that looks like an accounts payable manifest in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars and seven cents.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I forgot to say.
Oh, wait, I don't have a pen. Nice, mine, I forgot, all my pens here, that doesn't help.
Cal, it looks like a second accounts payment?
Yes, Mary did it in two different ones, because this one covers the rest of April, and then that one starts in May, so that we should compile them separately.
And there's gotta be, any.
There's three things in there.
Oh, good to see that.
One of them is the school payment.
Yeah, yeah.
One of them is, uh, transfer to Sam's office for fees, which is an accounting thing, not an actual expense, and then the third thing is the T-one repairs.
Oh, for the engine?
The engine bill is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is that? Back?
It is.
Wow.
The in-chassis repair.
Hmm, they drove it, successfully drove it from Manchester to Canterbury.
Okay. Hope that's not the, the only bit of life in this one city.
I hope this keeps going.
I'm gonna carry the back.
All right, so this accounts payable manifest is six hundred four thousand dollars, one hundred sixty-seven and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Wow.
That may be a record. Unfortunately.
Carry that truck.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Get that to you. All right. Can I leave the, from Sam?
It was from, from Mandy, um,
From Mandy, okay.
And I put the.
So yield tax levy?
Oh, is that, okay.
I put a post-it on it so that you can see the map of the lot without having to.
Thank you, okay. I appreciate that. So, uh, uh, yield tax levy for map two thirty-one lots one and two, in the amount of five thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and two cents. And we don't need a motion, we just sign those, right?
What was the amount again, Scott?
Five thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and two cents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Timber tax or, uh, current use?
Should be timber tax, timber.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Two, two timber taxes.
Does, does that mean they're done? Has the trucks have been?
Yes.
Going up and down like crazy, still.
Um, I don't, I don't know if that's, I, I don't know if it's, that, if it's finished or not.
Okay. But they usually do the timber tax at the end, or?
Usually, but I don't know, besides that project that might, Smith. We have to sign this yellow second page too? Yeah, I think there's a couple of places there.
Okay.
Yeah, that is a huge project. Is a huge project.
Yeah, they're gonna be in this winter too.
Yeah.
Because they got too muddy and butt out too early to finish it.
Actually went up and looked at the road.
All right, I think we can.
All right, next is notice of intent to cut water timber for map two oh five, lot number three, it's a parcel on Old Misery Road.
Do we need to motion, or we're just signing it?
No, I think we just. Thank you. Oh, so, thanks, Cal.
Does that say Old Misery Road? Is that different than Misery Road? I was gonna say Old Misery Road. We don't have two misery roads in town, do we?
No, I don't believe it.
Okay. Just checking.
No, it was discontinued.
I have to run this.
The, the, the map, no?
The, the map is correct, it's just misery.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a, um, mistake by the applicant.
He can give Calvin more work to do, so.
Well, if he's lived there forever, and they used to call it Old Misery Road.
That's ruled it out on these.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a new misery road somewhere that we had to worry about, that would be bad. Okay.
All right, uh, last item is the, uh, payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
What was that number again, Scott?
Fifty-six thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. All right, so that's payroll.
Sorry, your signatures are getting worse as time goes on.
I think mine can get worse.
I, I, I think it could.
Yep. Thank you. Turn that over, and now that, mm. All right, next is minutes.
So I just sent them out this morning, so I, I, I don't know if you have any time to read. April twenty-one?
No, I got, I got those in there.
Yeah.
Being a rainy day, nothing better to do. Read two minutes.
Do you have time to read them?
I, I read it in the truck.
Oh, okay. Um, so the, um, the only things I got were grammatical, so, um, you can do as amended, but, um, you don't need to detail all my typos.
All right, so looking first at the public, uh, portion of the meeting from April twenty-first. Uh, motion to accept as amended.
Be, before you motion, there was grammatical, but there was one, does that, the one place where things were moved? Um, was that correct? There was, we went into private, and then there was payroll manifest?
I didn't, I didn't move it, because, yeah, that was correct. Because we, you went into executive session, in the executive session, you approved the welfare manifest, not public information, so that's.
Even though we were in the, even though we were in, we didn't have to come out to do that little bit of public and then go back in?
No, because the discussion was, the discussion was about it, and then.
Okay, I just.
That's just a decision that you made in executive session that is public knowledge.
Perfect, okay, now I understand how that works. No, that's fine, that's all, sorry, discontinued.
So I made a motion to accept the, uh, April twenty-first minutes as amended.
Uh, so moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Turning our attention to the executive session from that same evening, April twenty-first.
All right, I did not read these. Okay.
Everybody have any?
No, these are fine.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And if you would pass in those.
Who would have passed back or?
The executive side.
Yeah, that's correct, only these. All right? All right, so I think that brings us to new business, Treasure House at the transfer station. So that was a letter or email?
It was the email, yes.
Yep. Everybody have a chance to read that email?
Yes, is it okay, is it okay if I pull it up just so I can send it forward?
Rich Markku? Please do, yep.
I do have a copy of it if someone needs.
No, I did have a chance, so.
Know what to look for.
I think you passed it on to us, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, you forwarded it.
Yes, it's came to me and I forward it on to you guys.
Some can, yeah.
Do you, do you just have a date that you sent that, Ken, please?
It's the first cycle Canterbury. Wednesday.
Right, it's on Wednesday, I got it on April this day, right, April thirtieth.
On the thirty first.
Yeah.
Okay, there it is. Thank you.
Alright, so it looks like, um, they're having some issues at the treasure house. But also Rich Markku was asking about the. Someone made a decision to start accepting, um, things like old coffee pots, lamps. And Rich's concern is over liability. And he says he sees it as a way for people to sidestep the fee schedule for, uh, the town accepting those items.
I'm not sure I'd see more into it than, um, Madeline, who's very enthusiastic, uh, about keeping the treasure house open and encouraging people to bring stuff. That since she saw that the, I think she says in her, um, the notice that she sent to the newsletter. That since the whatnot is accepting more, um. That that are accepting. I don't know if the, oh, I thought I read this, it said the whatnot was accepting corded items. But upon reviewing the policy, ended up considering the whatnot. So, I'd like to know where the policy is, cause I don't ever remember seeing one and, um. I think it would just be easy to say, you know, Madeline, uh, just don't accept corded lamps.
Hmm.
What what more do we really need to?
Yeah. I don't know how they can't, at the treasure house itself, there's no electricity.
Right.
So they can't check it on them to make sure it's in working condition.
No.
Not there, they absolutely.
Going to.
I don't remember them ever accepting corded stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
For that very reason, you couldn't tell if it worked.
Right.
I mean, they accepted a lot of stuff that they don't accept now, like, you know, books and fabric and stuff like that, that's understandable, but I don't think they ever took. Plugging stuff.
Right.
So, um. So what is, what is? Rich just really wants us to weigh in on what we think about the treasure house accepting corded things? I'd say no. Think that's. That's kinda easy.
Yeah, I I agree with it as well, so I think there's his guidance.
But a, but a bigger question would be, who actually is overseeing the treasure house people because? It's unclear to me here, you know, um. Who is? Because, you know, Ken and I talked about it a little bit this morning, it used to be a, a separate group of volunteers, it wasn't the solid waste committee.
Mm-hmm.
That was running the treasure house stuff or making policy, they just, they were. I don't know if they made policy or they were just finding volunteers, that part of the, of the equation, I don't know.
I have never seen a policy for the treasure house, what they accept, what they don't accept. Again, it was. My interaction has been that we needed to get volunteer waivers for anybody that worked up there. And that they worked with the transfer station staff to determine what they would take and what they wouldn't.
Right.
Based on, is there a charge at the transfer station and if there is, then the treasure house wouldn't take it.
Right.
As a matter of fact, um, just to avert a, a charge for it, so. I I didn't realize that they had policies or written policies.
I I'm not, I I really doubt they, they do. But I mean, I know that after they had a big clean out, uh, maybe it was during COVID. Um, and they got all the books and the fabric out of there, having a big rodent problem. Uh, and all the books were always being gnawed on in the fabric and being nested in and all of that. And then they had signs up everywhere, but who did the signs? Or if it got written into a policy or they just posted them, the volunteers who were cleaning it? I mean, I can find that out. Um, I can ask Madeline herself if, if you want me to, because she's always submitting to the newsletter and I. Talked to her several times and when I go to the next, um. Solid Waste Committee meeting next week, I can ask as well if they have any information. But as far as you know, on our books, on the town books, there's no policy.
I don't have any copy of any policy.
Okay, then I'll see if the solid waste committee does. I can also ask, uh, Russell Fields and.
Yeah.
Who, who chaired it?
Russ has been there.
Russell, Emily was there.
Yeah.
Stephen Roche should know.
And, uh, Madeline sent out an email on the twenty ninth of April, asking for volunteers.
Yeah, she's been asking for a lot of volunteers and she's been very gung ho and put a lot of enthusiastic.
Yep.
Things in the, in the newsletter where we hadn't heard from somebody in a long time, so.
Yeah.
Um. I think this is, you know, her email just sounds like Madeline being enthusiastic.
Yep.
And not really thinking about the corded issue thing.
Yes.
So I will pass on to the solid waste committee that the board of selectmen. Don't want them to accept corded items up there.
Correct.
And.
At the treasure house.
At the treasure house. Are you gonna talk to Madeline about that or you want me to try and talk to her?
I'll be happy to talk to her.
Okay.
I'd appreciate a reminder from you that I just said I would do that, but yes. I'll write it right here.
Alright. Anything else on the treasure house? I think, Ken, unless you've got any new business? Under old business?
Yeah.
There's one more.
There's one more in the business folder, should be.
Oh, yeah.
Friends of the Canterbury Center.
Yep.
Um, like to. They, they sponsor the Fourth of July hot dog.
Yep.
Event there every year. And I guess informally they have allowed or people have informally brought some alcoholic beverages there. They would like to make sure that the selectmen are okay with that. The police chief was in today, only had this discussion. He didn't feel there was a problem, it's a BYOB. It's on town property, if all, there's no open container law in the town. Um, so preventing people from, from having alcohol beverages, uh, in, on public property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that would be a town ordinance, uh, there's no state law that prohibits it. All the other laws surrounding alcohol beverages would, would be enforced, um. But, uh, he didn't feel, he, he wanted to make sure that the selectmen were okay with it.
Yeah.
Um, I know this has come up with discussions about renting a car hall. Our insurance company, um, particularly with the building and things like that, they felt that, they didn't, they didn't think it was the right thing to do. This is the, the town center, the gazebo.
Yeah.
Uh, Fourth of July, it's a fairly, it's a family event, it's not anything else. There is certainly a liability there that we would, we would take on, but at the same time. Yeah, this is up to you guys inside what you want to do.
Well, if we don't have a, um, an open container law and, and at the farmer's market, it was perfectly legit to have people, we had a beer vendor. To be able to buy a beer, they sold by the cans.
But they had to have permission from the town to do that.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, gotcha.
But people could also, but people have bought beers at the Canterbury store and walked outside and sat in the gazebo and. Drink them, right?
Again, informally, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So this is more form.
They can't, they can't, they can't consume it on the property of the store because of liquor laws.
Right.
So they can't sit on the front porch, but they can go out in the gazebo.
Yeah, sit on the front porch, but they could go to the gazebo. But again, this is an event that's sponsored by a group where they're more or less assuming some responsibility.
So. How is that different than the farmer's market? Because we have, we, we have a lot of insurance.
Because the, the, uh, alcohol that was, was being consumed at the farmer's market. Was being sold by a vendor as, um, samples.
No. They were selling cans of beer.
The paperwork that I got, he said they were gonna be selling two ounce samples, they could sell a bottle of beer, but they could not consume that bottle of beer on the premises.
Oh.
They need to amend the paperwork.
Well, that, I'm wondering if that's when we had the wine people there, because there were.
That was the, that should have been the same thing, they could consume samples up to two ounces, but they could not consume more than that. They couldn't sell a, a six ounce glass of wine.
No.
They could sell a two ounce sample.
Correct.
Or they could sell a bottle. That was sealed.
Correct.
But they couldn't sell a s- a glass.
An open, a glass of what? But what about a sealed?
A sealed bottle they could sell, yeah.
Or a sealed can of beer?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Correct, so that's what they were gonna do, just a sealed can of beer, right?
Yeah, because Canterbury now where he was there, he was selling two ounce, uh, samples. But he could sell a grower.
But that was ages ago, like two years ago, we had, we don't have any beer selling now.
And, and the wine was the same thing, they had to, they had to talk to the town, we got paperwork from the town, from, from them, from the vendor.
Okay, okay, no, we're fine, cause it was the.
That said that they could, they could do that.
It was the, um, wildflower, um.
Yeah.
And they were selling cans of beer, this is long after Steve Albin.
Oh, okay, alright.
Uh, sealed cans of beer.
And they, they can do that.
Yeah, okay.
As long as, as long as they have a liquor license to sell.
Correct, they did.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all set, okay, I just was wondering if.
Can't be consumed on the property, but it could be sold.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so, um, family friendly event in the center, alcohol, I can't, I think fireworks. People aren't going to be coming and getting.
No.
Rip, wring, drunk at the family fireworks with their kids there, I can't imagine it.
It's a family event.
Five to eight.
Yeah.
And again, all other liquor laws pertain.
Yeah.
Right.
They get in a car and they're drunk and the police catch them, then, you know, um, or if they are. You know, there are, there are laws against, uh, um, public drunkenness as if they're, you know, they can be, you know, if there's, uh. Can't think of the, the term, the police use.
Will there be some, will there be a police presence at the hot dog, um?
There's certainly this.
Yeah, try to confirm.
Alice is on the committee, she can maybe answer.
Okay.
What was the question?
Are you gonna have police at these events? Are you guys paying for the police?
That's a secondary question.
I'm just kidding.
That's actually this, the question here, cause.
Yeah.
The issue, there's a section allowing alcohol, but the issue is that they would need to pay for an officer to be there, so they're looking for an exemption. To not have an officer there, as long as people are doing BYOB, um.
Not, not to.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
That's what we're.
So we're just asking for the rules that have always been in place to pay.
So five to, five to.
Basically, yeah.
Five million whys, they need us to.
Yes.
Yes, so we just need you guys to sign a little note on the bottom saying, it's okay if you don't pay for a police officer to be here.
Gotcha, okay.
If you so choose.
I mean, has there, I've only been in town eleven years, I've never seen an issue with it in the center for Fourth of July or any other events.
Aye, yeah.
So long as the hot dog people aren't like selling beer or encouraging beer or.
My beer.
I, I don't think my girl alone is gonna be selling beer.
The insurance man, he cooking the hot dogs and beer?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're.
I think, I think.
He cooking the hot dogs and beer?
He might try to sell you insurance, but he's not gonna try to sell you beer.
Right.
Oh, then I think we're good.
Alright.
I think I'd be okay with it.
Yeah.
I agree, do we need a motion or just?
Yeah, I think you should have a motion on this one.
Alright, so, I'm not sure what I'm making a motion for, but.
That you can.
Speak, speak and we will say the best word.
To allow, here, it's time to. That way I'll, I'll craft something, something.
To allow a function without a police officer.
Yep, uh, the function on. Wow, all these dates. Alright, so, this looks like a multi, it's covering a multi-day, multiple days event then, right?
No, it's like.
You know?
It's five different events, so there, yes, there is, so it's not only the Fourth of July, but there is also these summer sessions in the center.
Oh, what? But across the summer, so.
Okay. Okay.
So there are four, like, music sessions that are happening, um.
Okay.
June twenty sixth, July seventeenth, August eighth, August twenty eighth.
Okay.
So, it's for those five events.
Alright, so I. Yep, alright, so I'll make a motion that we allow, uh, alcohol. A BYOB, uh, alcohol without a police officer being present. On June twenty sixth, July five, July seventeen, August seven, and August twenty eighth. Did that make it? Okay, looking for a second.
Uh, se- uh, yes, I second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, I think we did it.
We didn't, we didn't need to say, um, um, the event's hosted by friends of Canterbury Center, did we?
Give it back to you?
You didn't say that, did you?
I don't think I did.
I will include it.
There you go.
I, yeah.
Cause I'm not sure I can say all that again.
I think everybody here understands.
Yeah. Just so we're specific about which events we're talking about, not just random events, but ones hosted by them.
Right, well, and also on those specific.
Yes.
Alright, I think that brings us to the bottom of the new business, looking at old business. Why don't we start with code of conduct? Which.
Do you mind if I take you on a tour or?
Oh, please do.
This one's gotten, um, you have two different documents in your pretty folders.
Yep.
Um. You have the latest draft of the code of ethics slash conduct, which has now been renamed to just code of conduct. And everywhere in the document has been changed to just conduct, it's, it's confusing to have two words. Um, on the first page, the, where under purpose, um, the purposes of this code of conduct are to, that section was moved up. Um, and two of the bullet points were combined because they were kind of redundant, so, um, that's the main change that happened over there. Um, there were a couple different small changes like grammar and rephrasing. Um, the next big change is on page four. This is under the section of all board chairs have a responsibility to, and that's brought up. Um, she, she actually brought it up for a different section of where should it specify that, um. If there's like grant reporting that needs to get done, so let me read the comment that you sent. Um, oh, right, so that suggested putting it under the time commitment section as like if there's. If a board agrees to do. Take a work for a grant or like applying for a grant or something, then they need to actually do it. Um, and I put it under board chairs have the responsibility to, I suggested adding, ensure that their board completes tasks required by law. And examples are grant reporting, policy updates, document retention.
Oh, okay. That's a much better place to put it.
Yeah.
Because that is, if there's grants involved and they are responsible for doing something and that's a legal requirement and the chair should be the one urging those tasks. Like, even if they delegated it to a representative in there, um. That seems like a good spot for it.
Perfect, thank you, that was a, a better place to put it.
Alright, so then the next big change is, um, on page four, select board members, so this is kind of combining the two documents that we had going.
Yep.
Um, and so a suggestion was putting it at the bottom of this, so like having a section. Like most of it applies to everybody, but then have a section that applies to select board members. The alternative that I am proposing is the second document in, that I handed out, which is how to select board.
I like the title.
And so this is a, this is a.
Better than selectmen for dummies.
Right.
Um, so this is, I, I was, um, cause we talked about in here, individual, individual boards should have their own mission statement, job descriptions, term of office, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, so I thought this, the select board duties would be better broken out into a select board job description. And this could serve as a example for other boards for how we want their job descriptions to be. And a lot of this was copied and pasted from the NHNA job descriptions, so that would be an easy thing for other boards to do.
Yeah.
And then it's really the, the duty section that is very customized to the select board. And that way we could take it out of the code of conduct, cause it's not really. It's not really. And that way we could take it out of the code of conduct, because it's not really, it's not really conduct as much as like how you do your job and answer your responsibilities.
Response, yeah, yeah. So this whole section, page four and um.
And five.
And five would come out, does it, does it get added to this or does this already include this?
This already includes includes that.
Okay. Okay.
I don't see both.
I didn't couldn't tell, wasn't exactly the same language though, was it, or was it?
Uh, it's not exactly the same.
No, okay.
Yeah, so just a quick question, in both documents I see, um, I'm looking at how to select board.
Yep.
Um, if you go to the third page, um, titled select board reps to board slash committees are expected to.
Oh, yeah.
The second bullet point is where I have the question.
Yes, I I.
I have a question too, that's right, that was another thing I had highlighted.
Yeah.
So, um, that is a question that you guys, I wasn't sure when I made this draft, what you had decided. Um, so if you are the select board rep to the planning board, you get to vote, are you supposed to vote based on your opinion or based on what you think the board would decide? I don't know what it is.
So I think that's asking us to, um, this is just my opinion. I don't know that I could predict, it's almost like trying to look into the future, how you think that that these two will think is sometimes a challenge.
Hey.
Well, it's not just.
No, no, I know what you mean.
It's it's, you know, others as well, but um, so I I think anyway, and what I've been doing is, you know, you can, um.
Mm-hmm.
I think I sometimes try to put my own personal opinion aside and vote for what I think is best for the town.
What's best for the town, okay.
Not personal or what you think the BOA, the BOS, which is, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Neither, so vote based on.
That is what the planning board member should do also.
Yeah.
Agreed, no, hundred percent.
No, I had, I had, my comment was that even if you're voting your own opinion, you should darn well vote the same on the planning board. And as a select board member, even if it is your own opinion.
Right.
But I think it's probably better worded to say for what's best for the, that's more true.
Yeah.
Okay, then I can change that to be vote based on what you think is best for the town.
Yeah. Yeah, uh that's what I I've tried to do.
Do we, do we need to say, um?
Be consistent?
Be consistent.
Hmm, it's probably not a bad idea.
I can add that.
Between the two boards?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause that's.
Yeah.
It's hard, especially if you're with one bunch of. Yeah, there's one one dynamic one place and one and one in the other, yeah, so I would say consistency is is important.
I agree, yeah. One bunch of opinions. Yeah. Yeah. Right, and uh while we're together, cause this is another difficult one, what's the time commitment to be on a select board?
That's not.
I've never, yeah, I've really, I've never stopped, it, I mean, all for all of us, you know, the phone calls, you know. Go to the store any any hour of the day or night and someone usually will stop you with an opinion or.
Slime, slime.
Not for good, yeah, complaint, um.
I would say time commitment is you have to be willing to be available.
I wonder if we say that it would, it involves a substantial commitment of time.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
I don't know. It it's hard to put a number on, do, I mean, I think.
Be prepared to be approached in public.
Yeah. That too, and criticize.
Or on your front porch. Which is fine.
Yeah.
Depends on the issue of who can help.
But but I think substantial is a good way to put it, and I think be be um. Yeah.
Okay.
Be prepared to be volunteered for things and stopped, that have questions.
Right. Right.
That's part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anything else that you see right now?
Under recommended training, yeah, that's a tough one, because um.
I would say almost.
I would just know everything.
Yeah, well, I would say almost any, I mean, like uh going to the uh zoning board basics, uh going to the whatever, I mean. It's not, I'm not on the zoning board, but I darn well should know what they're doing, so going to any of the training.
So there's a lot of stuff that I haven't included in here that I learned at the local officials workshop. Cause I learned a lot about things that you guys are supposed to to know and okay, it's everything, it's like, it's everything, yeah.
It really is, yeah.
But I I could add those to this document as listed, listed now.
Hard road to travel and blah blah blah, yeah. You you could basically say, you could list some and then say, you know, um, check, uh you, anything that NHMA offers, yeah, and.
We're just attending, I mean, just attending meetings too as a as a spectator and seeing how they operate and functions, that's a lot of training too, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't wanna scare people out of doing jobs.
But.
It's a lot of training.
Yeah, I I think that, you know, certainly in in my years of involvement. You know, people sometimes come in like a, like a comet, and then they very quickly tail off and and just stop coming. And on the planning board, we had that issue right now. Yeah, so.
No, I'm not sure I'd list everything, but just, you know, as examples.
For select board, this document is a little bit harder, cause there's so much, but for like the planning board, it would be limited to like maybe three different trainings, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, yeah, that are directly.
Yeah, those are important, with everything changing in zoning and planning regulations, those would be, I wouldn't say mandatory, but definitely insightful.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's really now all pending state legislation.
Mm-hmm.
Whichever way that that plays out, so.
Well, did you, you know, I'm just looking back up, if we can fact check for a moment, you're under time commitment, regular board, you know. Being on call for emergencies, but also being available for conversation with residents.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm gonna kinda add, um, people stopping you in public or calling you and all of your boundaries will be gone.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It's very true.
Okay.
People showing up in the house.
Yep.
At seven AM.
Yep.
Alright, so um if there's nothing else at this meeting, I will again make a new draft, send it out, ask for comments.
Okay.
Make another draft right before the next meeting and we'll continue forward.
Yeah.
And you've got the other draft of how to, how to XX your, you know, whatever, if this is kind of a template for.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Alright, that brings us on to discontinued roads.
Yeah, roads. I will prefer it's a, this is like person coming on.
Our newest expert.
Well, good thing. No, I uh after last meeting, I started doing some digging, almost a lot of digging, so.
Yeah.
Um, I reached out to some people, uh legal people, sought some advice, reached out the web, uh about some surveying recommendations, et cetera. A whole lot of yards, long story short is, we're gonna do a little bit more tracking down. Um, I talked to Ken, I think I'm gonna do the NHMA class on the roads, I think it's in cool four weeks, try to track.
Okay.
Oh, the hard road to travel is good.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hopefully they graded that road that week, but no, I'm gonna try to get some more information, because some of these um issues that we're having are sort of in the gray area.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where it's interpretation, you know, if the town or the one of the interpretations I've been given was if the town didn't accept the road. If it was my road from your house and it was whatever, I don't think it goes away. The town has accepted them in the past and it was a town meeting vote, potentially it could be discontinued. So it's just a lot of the the little clarifications, I've looked over the old maps from the road committees, the discontinued roads. Let's represent on our new maps, trying to figure out what's a priority, um, you know, I spoke to Ken Britha this morning when I went in there. And I think something that we might wanna consider is once we start getting some clarification or direction on these issues. Maybe we um meet with the planning board, if we decide to go in a warren article to kind of clean these roads up, maybe we meet with the planning board. Um, or conservation committee, whatever boards we feel are relevant, and kind of say, of these, I think the maps show seven right now that are discontinued, not subject to bars and gates. Prior to nineteen fifty.
Okay.
Or fifty-three, um, you know, if we bring those up, that might be something we look at and say, what are buildable, what are not buildable? How have these roads been honored since they were discontinued, um, just those kind of questions and just sort of clean this up.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, it's it's just sort of one of those looming issues that we sweep through what we can, if we don't, we don't, but we did the, we did our homework.
Yeah.
So I have been to the archives, right now I'm just trying to determine where the court of common pleas was filed and what it evolved into. There's a lot of evolution questions in this, but some of the information is easily accessible. I think I got a hundred and some odd pages from Jan, from the towns, and I've been ciphering through them, trying to read nineteen, seventeen eighty-five cursive, so.
I think that's a whole little.
It's, it is, but I mean, it's, we're trying to do the homework, trying to do it the right way, see what we can, clarify what we can't, if anything was overseen.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And then figuring out what the next steps are. Hopefully the NHMA class will sort of answer some of the the ambiguous questions I have, or at least steer in direction.
Yeah.
And then we can figure out our next step on how we wanna deal with those.
Yeah.
I know we said there were seventeen roads, uh I think the map only reflects.
I don't know, I've looked from Wayne Man, it was seventeen.
Yep.
Roads that uh were done before the nineteen sixty or sixty-two or whatever law change, yeah.
Yeah, because.
And why are you saying seven?
Because our our current, where where are they, the roadmap, the current roadmap we have that NHMA, not NHMA, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh Central Land Shenonah Planning put out in twenty-three, only reflects seven of them.
Yeah. Okay.
So it shows seven is discontinued, and I believe, oh gosh, nine or ten discontinued post nineteen fifty, subject to bars and gates. So it's just different definitions and and you know, we're just trying to figure out where the where the void was or, you know, did we miss a piece of paperwork? Was it done correctly? We're just not interpreting the law, cause we have to kind of go back and say, hey, this this RSA, which was a CS, in eighteen fifty stated this. What did that evolve into at the time of the meeting? It's just a lot of playing law and order detective on it and trying to figure out at the time of it. Being voted on, was it voted on according to the, or you know, in correlation of the way the the RSAs were at the time.
Well, thank you for being willing to take all this out, I'm not sure Alice would echo my thanks, but um.
Alice is right there, I'm trying to decide who it is.
For trying to decide who it is.
Trying to decide who it is.
Hold hold, thank you guys well.
For the ones in there.
Eighteen whatever.
No, I mean, it's it's really, it's actually not, it is time consuming, it's really interesting to see, you know, and seeing other.
Yeah, although it is, yeah, I'll look at our past.
But no, hopefully, hopefully that meeting in a couple of weeks, we get a little bit more light on it and then.
Take a direction to move in.
Sounds good, keep us posted.
Alright, good, well, seven roads seems manageable, but anyway.
You'll be a teacher there.
Or seven next year, right.
Seems, seven or seventeen, but seven sounds more manageable than seventeen, which sounds more manageable than fifty, which is the number that was going around first, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, was I.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Alright, anything further?
Um, on discontinued?
Discontinued roads, yeah.
No. Oh, not for me.
Alright, then, yep, that'll bring us to Sam Lake House Garage Bids. Yep, um, so we sent out the notice, uh invitation to bid, it was posted on the website, put in the town email. Yep. Um, posted at the town office, I received um two bids from contractors that are here. I'll give it to you. They need to be written out? Um, yeah, the bids, the date, uh it was specified in the invitation to bid that you guys would be opening the bids on May fifth. Alright. So um we're not gonna accept any more bids unless this happens.
I do have a question about that though, since you did get have, get contacted by somebody who said they sent you it and you didn't receive it.
I did.
Could there be anyone else? Should we ask, should we say, did you send us something that we have? I mean, why does somebody else legitimately send a bid that?
I have not been contacted by anybody else that was interested in bidding on it.
Right. Okay.
The person that had emailed me the, their bid and then let me know, they had let me know they were interested in it. They had talked to me about the invitation to bid, they'd come done a, they'd done a site visit. And then when the, um, they told me they were gonna send it that night, that day.
Oh, okay, so you were looking for it and it didn't come.
I was waiting for it and it didn't come, so I contacted them and said, hey, I didn't get it. And so we went back and forth and he did send it, so I got it.
Okay. I was just curious if anything else might have gotten lost that way.
Nobody else has has come for a site visit or expressed interest other than these two contractors.
Yeah. And they both came for site visits?
They both came for site visits, yes, yeah. Alright, Ken, looking at this, so it's one of the Galatus?
Uh, pure Galatus.
Galatus, okay, so that's in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, although I note, um. He's got an additional cost for synthetic slate, additional cost for hardy board, and additional cost for hardy board cement. So the the uh scope of work asked for um options for slate roof versus asphalt.
Yep.
And for cement siding versus cedar siding.
Okay.
Um, at the town office, when they rebuilt it, they used cement siding. Um, and so I asked for, and they used slate roof, so we we asked for options um for that.
Okay.
No, there was such a thing as synthetic slate, doesn't surprise me, but.
I don't either. I don't know that I've ever seen.
You can fake anything now.
Yeah.
Well, I would think you, I would think you could. My big concern is that it just matched, even if it was not slate-like material, but the color.
Think the HDC would wanna weigh in on anything extra, and that would be the, you know, I think, you know, yeah.
Kevin had stated in the last meeting we had that they'd like to have a glance at what was coming to you. Now, does that number include any of the subcontractors or that's just?
That does not include the electrical or HVAC.
Okay.
I have those, they, those are separate bids.
Well, that's a, I mean. I'd like more than a net, uh two minutes to read through all that and figure out what it means, but, okay, and he's um.
I have, I have the scope of work here, if you wanna look at that, compare it.
Okay. Why does um this name sound so familiar though? Has he done work for the town before?
He had the uh gutters on the school.
Oh, okay, that's why. Why is eight feet highlighted here? Was that after our conversation?
Yeah, there was a question about it and I highlighted it, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was what the interior dimensions were.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this compares with that. Are we, um, oh, is that the second bid?
Second bid, yeah. This was much.
I think so. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so second bid is from Shaker Heights Custom Homes LLC in Boscombe. And it says bid price per spec sheet with thirty-year asphalt shingle, cedar siding and shingles. Electrical and HVAC by others, forty-nine thousand dollars, cement siding would reduce quote by fifteen hundred dollars. Signed by Daniel Remillard. That's it?
No, I didn't feel the need to repeat what was scripted out here, so a man of efficiency.
No.
Do you have any, um, um, I mean, Mister, uh, how how do you say that first one, Galatus?
Galatus.
Galatus.
Glass.
Um, other than doing the gutters, do you have, do you have any recommendations on either of these terms?
Um, he is all, he also did some work at the municipal building, repaired some of the roof leaks up there.
Yeah.
And he did some work at the um Elkins Memorial Building, the front steps, he did some work over there.
Okay.
Um, that's, he's a very busy person, so I'm guessing that, you know. I I haven't gotten any, I didn't ask for recommendation letters, um, I, I asked for bids and this is what it was.
Okay.
I did not ask for recommendation.
Well, the town has at least worked with him before, but.
Yep, yeah.
I'd be hesi- I'd be hesitant and just, um, but you met with him, Mister Remillard?
I have seen his work and it's quality work, he's built a whole bunch of houses in Boscombe and um, the last one sold for six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
Well. Sometimes that means quality work, most of the time, yes, I would think.
Yeah, um, like I say, he's built a whole bunch of houses in Boscombe. Yeah, um, like I say, he's built a whole bunch of houses in Boscombe. Um, the building inspectors over there like him, um, so.
Okay.
Do we need to decide tonight?
Um, you don't need to decide tonight. Um, I did explain to both of them that we couldn't do any interior work until after August first.
Yep.
They could do the roof probably if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Uh, before then.
Yeah.
And maybe the exterior, um, if they, they felt they wanted to do that. But, um, that the interior work couldn't be done until after August first. Because the fair has asked that, that we wait until after the fair so they can move the stuff up.
Yeah.
Um, I do have bids from two electricians. And again, I, they both, both of these people came and did site visits. Um, they have both worked for the town before. Um, they've both done good work for the town.
Alright, so the first one is Copperhead Electrical Services in Loudoun. And the, uh, estimate is in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm assuming Ken, that this sixty amp panel matches what we called out.
Right, okay.
That includes the trenching conduit, the whole shebang?
Correct. Well, I told them that the town would dig the trench. They would provide the conduit and, but the town, the road agent, the highway department would dig the trench.
Gotcha. Nice new backhoe?
With a new backhoe, yeah.
I like this. I think you might end up with a few rooms in this build, you think? Um. I didn't see in the scope, did, uh, did you bring up anywhere the, um, the parking, the additional parking outside or is that?
I did not.
That's not them anyway, correct?
That, and that came up afterwards.
Yeah.
So I didn't, that was not included when we sent out the first.
And I would assume that what, um, we're talking about, we could do our town crew.
I think our town crew could do that if we needed to, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That makes more sense.
If, uh, if it's gonna be trucks back in there and stuff, doing construction, my guess is the law's gonna get, kind of clean up a little bit now. It might be the time that our, our highway department will do that.
Yeah. Alright, second estimate is from Trusted Electrical Services LLC in Stratford, New Hampshire. In the amount of six thousand dollars.
Um. Cause the first one said this is estimated cost to dig a trench, but didn't you just say we're digging a trench?
Yeah, and that was included in there and, and again, I, I think he didn't understand that the town was gonna dig that, so.
Alright. Some both included digging a trench?
Hmm, no, no, the first one did not.
The first one's over. First one's six hundred bucks.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, together that, um, what else is in the cost that? That doesn't, that doesn't bring us up to the eighty thousand from the trust?
It does not. Does not. The only thing it's not, that we did not get bids on was the HVAC.
Okay.
Which, um, I have some notes here. I contacted two companies. They both said they were gonna get back to me. I needed the air from them. Um, just as a, for reference, the HVAC at the meeting house in twenty-two. Uh, was seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, the same thing at, and that was for the meeting house and up at the fire station. Um, and then in twenty-three, we did the one on the side from Historical Society and that was sixty-seven hundred dollars. So even, even if these prices go up to ten thousand, we still hired at the eighty thousand mark. Given the bids, all the bids put together.
One thing I'd be conservative about is addressing the lead. What if they have to re-sheet everything? And the costs. I mean, if, if the town decides, for instance, the first one, the fifty-eight thousand, if you put the add-ons. The slate roof and the hardy, you'll get another twenty-five thousand on top of that, so you're already pushing the envelope.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep, yep. And again, that's, I asked, I asked for those options so you guys can determine what you want to do.
And are those options up to us or is that still up to your district?
That's up to you guys. The options are up to you guys, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, do we know the window? Like, are we just getting Home Depot windows? Are we getting Marvin's? Did, like, I'd like to see explanation of what you're getting.
Um, I, I think I put. So. I think it was just, scope was just like matching. Energy efficient. I put replaced existing with energy efficient double hung vinyl exterior, same style as Sam Lake House. Not same made, but same style. Energy efficient, double hung. Um, one of the questions the HVAC, uh, HVAC companies both asked. What was the, what would be the temperature we would want that going at? Um, I told them it was for secure file storage. We don't anticipate that being office space, but we're gonna insulate it. And, uh, I gave them the dimensions of the windows that are there now, so they could do a heat loss. Um, and I told them, you know, sixty-eight would be a, a temperature we'd want, wanted at, um, for heating and cooling. To keep it relatively, you know, sane. My guess is we would probably have it at fifty or, or something like that for most part, but.
Yeah, I'd be curious, the spray foam cost versus insulation as well? If you want the building tight and the whole, we spray foam that thing, it'd be pretty efficient.
Yeah, I mean, again, we, we had a budget we were working with, so I didn't, I know that spray foam is, uh, is more efficient. But again, it's more costly and if we're not gonna be, that's a small space, if we're gonna be heating it to sixty degrees or sixty-five degrees, then. I didn't see that it was, is it worth the extra money to spray foam it?
You'd be able to weigh in better on that maybe?
I mean, like insulation wise, I'd rather, if we're not using spray foam, I'd like to see Rockwell or something in there that's gonna. Be a barn, you know, more barn. I mean, I appreciate the estimates, I just.
Mm-hmm.
There's certain things that kind of leave me wanting more, like for instance, on one of the estimates, it was fifteen hundred dollars cheaper if they went with cement board.
Yep.
What siding is he using that's fifteen hundred dollars cheaper to go to cement board? You know, like, there's just certain things I'd like to clarify.
Okay.
That's all.
I can find out. I mean, I, if, I can get details. What do you want me to, I mean, check with the contractor and say, what kind of cement siding are you using?
Yeah, just, just.
Like a manufacturer?
For what, what are we doing? Cedar? We doing prime cedar? What's coming in there? Pine?
Well, it was cedar. The, 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 um, specs called for cedar.
Okay.
Prime cedar.
So probably three bucks a linear foot then?
I don't know. I, like I said, I left this up to them.
Cause my biggest concern is right now, the way that the.
They're the ones that are supposed to do the pricing on it.
I, I know, I'm just saying that trend right now with where that stuff comes from and what the costs are going. Even if we accept it, do we have any leeway that?
There's nothing in here that says that these bids are good for thirty days, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, nothing like that.
Okay. Okay.
I, it specifies in that invitation to bid that you guys will be opening the bids tonight. Um, I, my guess is they would be anticipating that you would make a decision soon.
Well, cause they would need to know, so they would.
They would need to know, so they would.
They would need to schedule and buy.
Yeah, yeah.
So my suggestion is, um, for both of you, let's answer any questions this week.
Yeah.
And, and then let's make a decision.
Yeah, I would think so. Um, and, and I would defer to, well, both you and, you, you've done construction and you yourself. As to, you know, if we need to get more specific about what they're putting in. Energy efficient, what does that really mean? To me, it means a whole range of things, so, um.
You could, you could go to Home Depot, get an energy efficient window for four hundred fifty bucks, or you could go spend eighteen hundred dollars on the same size window from another company.
Well, I, I guess this is why I set that scope out to you guys before I set it out.
Yeah. Yeah.
To ask for input on it.
Yeah.
I didn't get any, so.
No, no, and, and you're right. I, I was not sure I would have even known then to ask, but when you see what they come back with. Um, I, I think the, um, Mr. Ga, uh, Galinas seems to be a lot more specific about what he's using. So, um, personally, I would, um, ask him for a little, he seems like he might have the information readily available as to if he has a product that he buys.
So could you guys email me your questions that you would like me to present to the contractors?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we get a copy of those two bids?
I can make copies of it and send it to you guys. And then I will send the questions out to the contractors. And can I let them know that you will make a decision at the next meeting?
Oh, certainly by then, yeah.
No, I think that's a good way to, yeah, alright. Thank you.
Can we do that, um, sooner than that? Well, I guess it would depend on when they get back to us.
Right, we're gonna have to call a, a special meeting. They have to be noticed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like I know everybody bids differently, like, I know when I bid, I bid product. So I just, in my mind, I wanna know what's being used that justifies the eleven thousand dollar difference in cost. Is it labor or?
Okay.
Alright, anything further on that?
I do not believe so. Well, next meeting's just two weeks, so that's not too bad. Or should it be that bad? It's not a three-week difference, it's.
So if I could ask you guys to send your questions by end of business Thursday? So I can get it out to the contractors and then give them a week to get back to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Thank you.
So now I have to go to the NHMA, how to, no, we need a how to do construction.
Alright, update on three sixty-seven Shaker.
Um, yes, I, let's see here. Uh. Spoke with the owners. Um, they felt that they were not violating zoning. I sent it off to our attorney. And our attorney sent back, uh, a draft of a cease and desist letter. That he'd like to send to them. Um. He had a couple of questions, but that's a draft of the cease and desist letter that he sent. And as far as we know, that subject is still reselling yet?
As far as we know.
Yeah. So if you approve of this, um, I'll notify the attorney. They will send the letter. And depending on what the response is from the property owner, from the business owner, that would be how we would respond.
Yeah.
And as you, um, we, I had asked you this morning how that's actually being sent, so it'll be certified and regular and?
It would be sent from the attorney's office to the property owner, certified and regular mail.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's still be a, a bit of time before this can be, uh?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tyson Miller is waving ass. I would say, yeah, I would say send it.
Okay, agreed.
That's okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll off the attorney in the morning.
Alright, and thank you to whoever remembered to put CPC and H Representative on tonight's agenda.
That would be me.
That you remember?
It makes me nervous.
Yes, I agree.
So the question is, uh, Scott, you're the alternate?
I am the alternate.
Um, and we're approaching the time of year when they're going to be meeting to stack setting rates or assessing rates.
Yeah.
And if you can't attend or you aren't gonna attend, then we need to find somebody that will.
We, we do need to find somebody, so. That was actually a discussion that I had a while ago now.
Yeah.
So, and there was never a alternate member found, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't seem to, to languish. So we need a representative and we need an alternate, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And do you have a grasp on this, the, a, a better grasp on the schedule of when things need to be actually done so we don't miss? I mean, uh, Ken, I looked at the calendar today to see when their meetings were and things, but, um, you know, what's our drop dead for finding people? So we don't miss the next rate setting date?
So I, I didn't see on that calendar, I looked out into September and I didn't see, they haven't scheduled. A meeting yet that I can see when they're having those meetings.
Yeah.
Right. I can contact them to find out, to see if they have that, um, scheduled. I mean, the only other thing we can do is advertise town email newsletter.
Yeah.
Um, website, looking for somebody, um, contacting, I'll talk to them.
Well, Fred, Fred is also concerned enough that he may well want to do that, or the other, um, um, I've got an energy committee and CPC. A CPC coming up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, between our collective brains, um, see if they have somebody that they've dealt with who might want to step in. And then they may very well know more the schedule. Because it seemed like last, it seems like every, the two times that it's come up, it's been like, all of a sudden a flurry of activity and la, we have to decide like now.
Thank you. So there's a couple.
I have to go back and it was like July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had to have. Like they had their meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
You guys met the fall on Monday or, or. Or did you guys meet on Monday and they have their meeting on Tuesday or is it just a real short deadline?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so their director resigned suddenly, right, because of, I guess, some health, at least helping the family issues. And they're definitely in a state of flux, I would call it as well.
They have a new term director, Henry Hurley.
Right, yeah. Um, but we, we need someone to represent us that has time. One of the issues is their meetings are always during the day on a weekday. So, you know, that, you know, that makes it difficult for a lot of people to attend. They do usually offer a remote option, Zoom or, or whatever system they're using. Still, it's at least an hour per meeting, so.
Okay. And then, um, well, actually, that's a good thing to know, one hour meetings. Weekly, monthly, quarterly?
They, for, in the very beginning, they were probably monthly. Um, but I, I don't think that, they've been irregular, um, is, is my memory lately.
Um, well, what I will do is I will, um, gently harass or, or, uh, re-reach out to Tom Franco.
Yeah.
Um, again, and see if he's got a better, and quite frankly, if nobody minds me asking Howard, uh, I'll. Reach out to Howard and say, you know, who do you, like, what's, what's a, a realistic time frame? Because, you know, knowing what it actually, the commitment is, is better, is easier to find a person.
Yep.
To fill it.
Yeah.
So if that's okay, I'll reach out to those two people and, um.
Sounds good to me.
And see, and, and someone like, um, uh, somebody on the committee maybe who stepped off because they weren't willing to do the full committee work. Might be able to step on and just do this one thing.
Yeah.
So, uh, if we have an, and then that might be somebody who's, uh, familiar enough with the process.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you.
And I'll mark it in green.
All right, great. Um, the last thing that I had is land acknowledgement. And I think that was some further information from Evan, wasn't it?
Yes. Um, it was, um, a lot of the links, well, a lot of, I followed the link to, um. If you click on the link in there and you go to the indigenousnewhampshire.com slash land acknowledgement. It's the Indigenous New Hampshire Collaborative Collective. Um, which was a very interesting read, um, about the background of how the collective was formed. Um. The thing, I went through and the things I highlighted were, um, they are big on knowing, um, that the land acknowledgement be accompanied, accompanied by actions. Not just a token, and they don't know what that really means. Um. Uh, I'm, I'm hesitant about just jumping into it because it sounds like a really good idea and not knowing if we're actually committing to something more than we expect.
Hmm.
That's the only, that's the only hesitation I have. I think it's great. Um, the, the, um, plaques look wonderful, the wording is good. Um, you're honoring the people who were here first, that is all good, but I just, I, I don't know what that means, if it means anything in a bigger sense, other than an acknowledgement. Because that doesn't seem to be what they want. Um, and if we're, if we're doing something that this group is, um, proposing. You know, or Evan is using this group to, to, to outline his proposal, I just wanna make sure what we're getting into, that's all. So, um, one of the questions that they themselves asked is, why are you doing a land acknowledgement? What's the goal? Why is this important to you? And I think, you know, that's an important question for us to answer. And, um, and do we want to, I mean, um, Evan is a fine student and, and concerned with this, which is great. But is there someone from the communities themselves that we need to get involved with? And is that what Evan's proposing? So is he proposing just a plaque or, or more than that? And that's, that's the second step that I don't know about that I'd, that I'd like him to answer.
Okay.
Cause I think the blacks are fine, the wording is beautiful, there's a lot of communities down on the seacoast that have them. Um, and that's great, but I. Is it, is it just an empty gesture? I don't know if, if, do they want more than that? I just, the, the background reading that he, um, was very interesting, so.
Okay. Well, I did not get a chance to look at the background, so. I have nothing to add.
I, I think, you know, again, I, I'd like to hear from Evan and, and he doesn't necessarily commit again, but if you could just say, look, what's, what's your, what's your plan here?
Do you wanna send an email to Evan? If you're gonna see that?
I do, cause he's on the Tricentennial, ready.
We'll be asking to respond.
My, my to-do list is getting as long as cats now, it's not, not nearly as long as cats. I will do. And I can ask, uh, he'll probably be at the next meeting too, but I'll send him an email before then.
Yeah. All right, anything further on that?
Not on that, not for me.
Right.
Um, let me just, uh, Tom, let go.
Anyone else have any old order business?
Yes. If you let me finish writing this note, I'm. And highlight me that you read, otherwise it will never get done. Um. That got answered. Um, did the letter go out to the Mees?
No.
Okay. Um, and Cal, did you get a, a reliable email for John Schneider?
I, oh, hey, knowing you had to contact him.
There is.
People have been asking me how to contact him and I'm like, I don't know how to contact him.
If you look at the roster at twenty twenty-four, it's got phone numbers for the planning board, his phone numbers, so you could call him, but the email address. He still apparently has a Canterburynh.gov.
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't, okay.
He doesn't, cause he's not on the planning board anymore.
Okay, then there, I've just got two phone numbers for him.
Okay. Can you send me the show notes?
Uh, I can. One of them's a cell phone, so I'm assuming that you could text him on that or call him.
I'll call.
Okay, yes, and that was it.
You're right.
Uh, I think. Yes.
A moment. A moment.
Yes, that's it.
All right, Cal, anything for you?
I'm good.
Okay. Cal? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Senated.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.